Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting at the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, could you please call the roll?
Andy Sollards?
Here.
Kathy Pucci?
She's absent, excused.
Mary Bell Bear?
Here.
Kevin Tansky?
Absent, excused.
Mark Politzki?
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Absent, excused.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then after that we'll have a prayer by Councilwoman Barbara Politzki. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to serve the community. Please give us the wisdom to do it well. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you. On our agenda tonight, we'll have approval of the minutes of May 28th and June 10th. Start with the minutes of May 28th, 2019. Any adjustments, corrections?
To approve?
Second?
To approve, Andy Sollards?
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Mark Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
And we'll have the minutes of June 10th, 2019. Any corrections? Move to approve?
Second.
To approve, Andy Sollards?
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear?
Yes.
Mark Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
At this time, we'll have swearing in of a new police officer by the mayor and Chief Milky. So, here we go.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I'd welcome Terrence Duncan to come on up and your family, so we can get some good photos. Your baby's gonna remember this. You gotta get a photo of this for like 20 years from now. This baby's really tiny. Okay, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Terrence J. Duncan, do solemnly swear...
I, Terrence J. Duncan, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio...
The Constitution and the whole of the State of Ohio...
...and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Brooklyn...
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Brooklyn...
...and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duties...
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge my duties...
...and impartially discharge my duties, close. That's right. As a police officer in the City of Brooklyn...
As a police officer in the City of Brooklyn...
...according to the best of my abilities and understanding...
According to the best of my abilities and understanding...
Congratulations and welcome to Brooklyn! So I hear this is a family, a family thing. Your father's a police officer too, right? But yeah, I have to get your signature right here and then I'm gonna let you or Chief Milky, if you want to say a few words.
So during the process of hiring, we quickly identified Terrence through the process. He was already a police officer at Kent State University. His father was a police officer in Brook Park. And we made him an offer of employment. Unfortunately, I found out that he was also on Brook Park's list at the time, so I had to threaten bodily harm to the Brook Park Police Chief that if he had hired Terrence before we were able to, I was gonna cut his knees out. Thankfully, Terrence went over to Brook Park and told them, "Take me off the list, I'm getting hired in Brooklyn." So I just wanna welcome him to the Police Department and I'm confident we got an officer that's gonna serve our community for the next 25 years very well. Thank you.
Photo here or no? Okay. Congratulations.
Alrighty. Next item on our agenda is that we have a speaker this evening. Lady by name of Nada Martinovic Tehu from Census 2020 and she'll talk about the 2020 Census.
Good evening. My name is Nada Martinovic and I'm partnership specialist for the Cuyahoga County. And thank you so much for having me here tonight. Our regional office is in Philadelphia and Philadelphia Regional Office oversees nine states, so Ohio is part of it. So I'm here to tell you just a few words about Census and give you a couple of updates about the 2020 operations. So as you may know, the Census Bureau is the largest statistical organization in the world. And the purpose of the statistical Census is simply to count the population because our population changes over time. People unfortunately die, new people or kids are born. So we need to provide the update to the government every 10 years. So in 2018, the Bureau completed one of the largest operations called LUCA, L-U-C-A, which stands for Local Update of Census Addresses. And we utilized and leveraging technology, geospatial imageries, and we were able to reduce number of visits to households because we know that people don't like when somebody knocks on their doors all the time. We are just about to start our address canvassing, which will last maybe a couple of months, so somebody may or may not show up at your door just to check and see if the address really exists there, but that, as I said, will be reduced to the minimum. Now, 2019, we called the educational phase and I will get back to that in a minute. Why an educational phase? But during this phase, we are trying to reach the communities, community leaders, stakeholders to spread the word about the Census. In March 2020, so next year, mid-March, everybody will receive invitation to respond to Census. Then after that, probably four to five times, you will receive like reminder, it will be reminder card, "Hello, did you forget to respond to Census?" Or "Go online and complete your Census." And only in cases that we don't hear from the household, we will send up to six follow-up visits. And on or before December 31st, 2020, we need to present our results to the government. So now, going back to the educational phase. Why educational phase? See, last year, Bureau completed one of the largest studies and the main finding, because I don't wanna hold you too long, but the main finding was that general population didn't really have knowledge about what Census is about. The good news was that when they were asked, "Okay, well, what would motivate you to respond to Census?", they said that knowledge, that their participation affects funding allocated to their communities, and if they hear that message from people that they trust, they will actually respond to Census. So this is why we are partnering with organizations at the federal, state, and local levels to ensure that the message gets across and that everyone gets counted. So this is what people in the community need to hear. Census is important. So why Census is important? Well, your response helps shape decisions about allocation of over $675 billion that government distributes to all states on a yearly basis. And there are some even more detailed studies that you can obtain online about specific dollar amount for our community regarding your response to the Census. Responding to Census directly impacts your representation in Congress. Census data determine how many seats our state gets in Congress. Also, redistributing of school and congressional districts is affected by your response. Governments and businesses use Census data to plan new investments, services, and jobs. Next message? Census is safe. Census Bureau employees are sworn for life to protect your personal information. Under Title 13 of the U.S. Code, the Census Bureau cannot release any identifiable information about individuals to any federal or law enforcement agency. Your answers can be only used to produce statistics. We have strong security measures in place to safeguard against cyber threats. Responding to the Census is your civic duty because, as you may know or may know, I don't know, but Census is in the Constitution, Article 1 and Section 2. Responding to Census is very easy. This is this time, actually, first time ever in history, Census will be available online. So in less than 10 minutes, you can log onto online and fill out a Census form. Or you can even choose to dial a phone number. A phone number will be provided on those invitations. And again, if that doesn't work, paper form will be delivered to your home. So please remember, the 2020 Census counts everyone who lives in the United States. The 2020 Census is not partisan effort to get a complete and accurate count of the U.S. population. The Census Bureau goes to extraordinary lengths to make sure everyone is counted once, only once, and in the right place. And moreover, the 2020 Census will paint a picture with numbers of the changing population in America. So we need your help to stay on track for the 2020 Census, apply for jobs, and spread the word about importance of 2020 Census. And speaking of jobs, we have about 6,000 jobs available in Cuyahoga County. Starting salary is $18.50. Jobs will be starting in August and we will have our local office open in Cleveland sometime in September or October. So that's my update about the 2020 Census. Will we answer any questions now?
Thank you. Does anybody on council have any questions?
If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any question. Thank you.
Thank you.
There will be a possible council meeting this coming Monday on July 1st at 6:00 PM. We're short three council members this evening. The Finance Committee was supposed to meet at 6:30. There was only one member present, so we didn't have a quorum, so there was no finance meeting as well. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward and state your name and address and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, everybody. John Wagner, 4825 Benwood Drive, Brooklyn, Ohio. Nada, you and I met for a very short period of time getting our badges together. Glad to see you here. I'm gonna talk about the recruiting side for a quick second. You all know me as the Census recruiting guy in the area. Let me give you just a little more information. We hired over 450 people since June 10th here in Cuyahoga County. That's a lot of jobs. That's the good news, but I'm not unemployed yet. Why? Because we still have three to four times that many people that we need to hire right here in Cuyahoga County. We're just starting this process. The biggest part of this process will actually be next year, when we start to do all the things that Nada was talking about. So please, don't forget about us. Continue your great support to me in helping me get the word out. You all know where I am. Please pass the word out and I'll help anybody that needs help in getting to apply. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outland Avenue. Let's bring up something I brought up before regarding the recycling. Are they ever gonna start looking into what everybody's throwing away because they're not recycling what they should? I mentioned it before. I mean, is our stuff actually going there, getting recycled or thrown out down the road? I see plastic bags hanging out of the dumpsters all the time. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you. We will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards, starting with the Domestic Abuse Commission.
Did you want to speak?
Oops, I'm sorry. Come on up, sir. I apologize.
I apologize. Thank you for seeing me. I'm not a resident. I live next to your development. I live in Brooklyn Acres in the Cleveland side.
We would need your name and address, though.
4312 West C2, Cleveland, Ohio.
And your name is?
Edward Thomas Meduski Jr.
Thank you.
I'm here to give you my opinion and a warning. If you vote or hire somebody, his name is Rob Slatter. He has no right or an injustice to your city to let his foot back in the door. He was an ex-policeeman who were very fortunate, he moved on. He gave good policeman a bad name. He cares nothing about veterans, let alone disabled veterans. Also, senior citizens, which I am 71 years old. This is not a vendetta. He has been trying to evict me for 10 months out of Brooklyn Acres, where I have lived 36 years. I have no record. I do not drink. I do not do drugs. I am a hell of a neighbor. I should not have to put up with this. At 21 years old, I came home and my family was the only ones that welcomed me home. At 50 years, God bless, last December, I was home 50 years under eviction. This man is nothing but a power-hungry liar. And please do not let him back in your community. God bless.
Anybody else? Thank you. We'll now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll start with the Domestic Abuse Commission. Councilwoman Ryan Shaki?
Thank you. We met earlier this month with a full agenda. We approved minutes from the meetings in March and April of this year. Our news articles included an article about Ayesha's Law, which has gotten priority from leaders in Columbus, as well as an article from a paper near Youngstown that showcased the cycle of domestic abuse. Maria, the Brooklyn Advocate for Domestic Abuse Cases from DVAC, came to the meeting and talked with the group. She discussed the role she plays for victims and shared some statistics about our city. We discussed updates with passing similar housing rights that we passed here in Brooklyn on a state level and progress on this process so far. We also discussed fundraising. We plan to host one or two fundraisers this summer, so please be on the lookout for that information. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a report from the Planning Commission. Mayor Gallagher?
I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. And we're gonna have a report from the School Board, Laheyside. Councilwoman Ryan Shaki?
Thank you. During the June School Board meeting, Superintendent Blakoff discussed the State of the Brooklyn Schools. The state report card has seen gains in graduation, performance index, and progress measure. The 2019 graduating class received $260,000 in scholarships. Plus, there were 442 college credits earned by the students that graduated this year in high school before even starting college this fall. There was an increase in student involvement this year in the schools compared to the year prior. And finally, school leaders have been advocating in Columbus for fair funding for schools and encourage residents to do the same. That ends my report.
Thank you. We'll now have reports of council, starting with Councilwoman Mary Bell Bear.
Thank you. A couple of quick condolences. As you might already know, our former councilperson, Tony DiMarco, had just lost his father. Not too long ago, he lost his mother. I'm very sorry to hear that. I know Tony was a wonderful son to both his mother and father. May they rest in peace. Also, our councilperson, Kathy Pucci, she lost her mother a couple weeks ago and my condolences go out to her and her family. I can only say about Kathy, she was such a dedicated and loving daughter towards her mom. And I know she's gonna miss her mom greatly, as everyone does when they lose a mom. It does create a vacuum, I always say in your heart. So my condolences go out to Kathy and her family. I'd like to welcome our new police officer, Terrence Duncan. He seems like a nice young man. It's an honor to see him and all his whole family here. I wish him a safe and wonderful year and I hope he likes Brooklyn. And pretty much with all the parks open and we have such a lovely park, we're so fortunate to have the beautiful park that we do have. I wish everyone to take advantage of it this summer, whether it's our park or neighboring parks with all the festivals and festivities that are going on. And I wish everybody a wonderful and safe summer. And that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilwoman Barbara Politzki.
Thank you. I'd also like to offer my condolences to the Pucci family who lost, Kathy lost her mom. Her mom fought a great fight and unfortunately lost it. I wasn't aware of Mr. DiMarco. I just got that information today, but that family too has gone through a lot, so I wish my condolences to them also. On June 11th, 2019, I attended my annual recertification meeting for OSHA, translated that is, Ohio Senior Health Insurance Information Program. OSHA is a program funded by Congress and administered by the State of Ohio. Every state has their own program. Congress also funds an organization called Pro Seniors Incorporated. They provide free information when you have legal or long-term care problems. Call me for a brochure if you need that information before September of this year at 216-671-6777. Understanding the complex Medicare/Medicaid options is an ongoing process because everything changes so rapidly. Although I've been involved with health insurance since 1977, I still need updated information, so don't be concerned if it's confusing to you. On September 18th, 2019, I will be offering a program at the Senior Center at 7:00 PM, passing on some of the information I received at this June training session. If you will be turning 65 in the near future, or have been there like me for a long time, you may want to attend. If you have a loved one who may need nursing home care in the future, you may also be interested. Since this is the last council meeting until September, I thought I would get this information out now. It will also be in the upcoming newsletter from the city. Finally, Laurel Garden Club donated several vegetable plants to Ben Franklin Gardens to be used to feed those in the community needing food. I would like to thank volunteers from Gateway Church on Pearl Road in Berwick for helping us plan last Friday. Thank you Pastor Tony and members of the congregation for your help. With all the rain lately, we had a small window of opportunity and with their help it was completed in a few hours. I would also like to thank members of our Laurel Garden Club who showed up on a few hours' notice to help us when the rain stopped. Thank you, Lord, for a few sunny days. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilwoman Brian Shaki.
I too wanna welcome Terrence to the City of Brooklyn Police Department. With new leadership in Columbus, the budget has been a hot item for our public officials at the state level to look at. I do wanna encourage residents to keep the pressure on our representatives to have fair school funding remain a priority in the budget. The state budget has currently been passed by both the House and Senate, but both groups of members will meet to negotiate a final version of the bill before the June 30th state deadline. I encourage you to call our representatives, including State Senator Nikki Antonio at 614-466-5123 and State Rep. Bright Sweeney, who was here at the last meeting, 614-466-3350. And encourage them to make school funding a priority for the budget. Also, Chief Milky, I had a couple residents contact me about garage sale signs this weekend being taken down before the community-wide garage sale. If you wouldn't mind commenting on that in your report, that would be great. And finally, as I did last year, I wanna encourage residents to get out there and get involved in our community during the summer recess. There are always opportunities to meet and talk with neighbors. A couple special opportunities this summer include picnic in the park on August 17th, two concerts in the park that will happen in July and August. And this summer, I will be hosting community cleanups for our residents to get together and get involved to pick up the trash around our city. These will be held from 9:00 to 11:00 on the following dates. June 30th at the Brooklyn Library, July 14th at the Fifth Third Bank on Tiedemann, July 20th at Memorial Park Grand Pavilion, August 10th at the Southwest Corner of Bedoff Plaza behind Giant Eagle, and August 25th outside of what used to be Good Sense in Ridge Park Square. There are also often fundraisers for different extracurricular school activities and I know the Domestic Abuse Commission will be holding one or two fundraisers as well. I look forward to seeing all of you around our wonderful community this summer. That ends my report.
Thank you. My sincere condolences to Kathy Pucci and her family as well on the passing of Kathy's mother, Mrs. Manley. While at the funeral home, saw a number of pictures of family gatherings and all this and that, so there's gonna be some cherished memories for her that might make it a little bit easier, as Mrs. Bell Bear said, it's just never an easy thing, losing a parent. It's always gonna be there in your memories. Also to the Mr. DiMarco, same thing, losing a mother and a father in a short time span, not easy and just not easy. Reminder, tomorrow, there's Baba's Yard, fresh produce distribution behind City Hall, depending on the weather, either in the parking lot or under the big pavilion. It'll be from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. You can pick up fresh fruits and vegetables that are provided by the Cleveland Food Bank at no charge. Other program that's being run is lunches for children, 18 years and younger. It's at the Brooklyn branch of the Public Library on Ridge Road from 11:45 AM to 12:30. They'll provide healthy meals provided by the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, once again, as long as supplies last. As Meg mentioned, picnic in the park, August 17th, Saturday. There'll be a DJ from 1:00 to 4:00. The band that was there last year, Billy Like Soda, will be there from 4:30 to 8:30 PM. And we'll also have fireworks at dusk. Once again, congratulations and best wishes to our newest officer, Mr. Duncan, for a good career, a long-living career here in Brooklyn. And finally, to all, have a fun and happy summer and be safe. That concludes my report. Next, we'll have the report from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sollards. I'd like to echo Council's comments about Mrs. Pucci's mother, my condolences to her and her family. It's not easy losing a parent under any circumstances. Some of the things going on that weren't already mentioned, the neighborhood gathering this Thursday, the 27th, at 6:30, right under the Grand Pavilion. So if you have any questions, I'll be out there answering any kind of questions that residents have, giving an update about construction and economic development and the likes. But it's really a great time if you have certain complaints in your neighborhoods or if you just wanna clear something up.
possible expansion or rebuild, as well as continue on with the visioning session with an updated current conditions report. Next, some people mentioned this, but our next concert in the park is July 10th at 7:00 p.m. This is Funkology, which we do have some local people in that band. It was a good hit last year, so I welcome you to come out and enjoy the park. Hopefully, this rain holds up because that seems to destroy so many events right now in the coming weeks. So hopefully by July 10th, the rain will stop. And then I sent council an email this past week. We will be working with Ridge Park Square on some initiatives. We hope to file with them some joint grant applications on greenscaping, storm water retention. I'm really excited about this project and the prospects of helping Ridge Park Square really green up the area, look more park-like. As retail continues to dwindle in the United States, and people are looking for areas where they can go and they can have an experience. So Brooklyn does not want to be behind the times in that. We want to be a destination where people want to go and enjoy themselves and walk around, eat, bike to the place, or walk to the place. But moreover, you know, as an older community, we did not have the type of zoning and water retention issues that we have now. And so as newer developments happen in the outer suburbs, they're more prepared for these things. And so as an older plaza in the 80s, looking at storm water retention and greenscaping, this can really impact all the surrounding neighborhoods as far as flooding and what's going into our water system. So again, I'm really excited about this project. Ridge Park Square is excited, and we're working with an engineer on doing a plan right now. And so hopefully over the coming months and the year, you'll see some changes on that front. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Chief Milky, I don't know if you want the dress.
So Friday night into Saturday morning, one of our night officers, as a regular part of our duties, we go around and collect the temporary signs that are placed throughout the city. The mattress for sales, the forgotten garage sale signs, things like that. This officer collected a number of garage sale signs in his area of the city. Out of his duty, we have an ordinance that prohibits the posting of these signs. So he did not realize that it was the garage sale weekend encouraged by the city, so he collected many of the signs and brought them back to the police station. So we returned as many as we could, and people claimed them. But in the future, I think maybe on my part, I should do a little better job educating them. But it is a regular part of our duties overnight shift on the weekends, and he was only enforcing the law that he knew, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Next on our agenda, we'll have confirmation appointment to the City of Brooklyn Civil Service Commission. Have a letter dated June 17, 2019, from the mayor. Dear members of council, I'd like to request council confirmation on the appointment of Ms. Brandy Emery to the Brooklyn Civil Service Commission. Ms. Emery will fill the unexpired term of Michelle Rivera, who has resigned from the commission. Ms. Emery's term will expire on January 24, 2021. I believe Ms. Emery will serve the City of Brooklyn well in this capacity. Please find her resume attached. Thank you sincerely, Catherine A. Gallagher, Mayor.
Move to confirm? Second. To confirm the appointment, Andy Selgerts?
Yes.
Mary Belvair?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is notification receipt of $750 for AEDs from Brooklyn Police Department. Attached, we have a letter dated June 10th, 2019, to Chief Scott Milky, City of Brooklyn Police Department. Dear Chief Milky, and a letter is from the Cleveland Southwest Safety Council. Dear Chief Milky, as we discussed previously, if no one else claimed the five remaining AED rebates from the Safety Council, we will give them to the City of Brooklyn. Encloses a check for $750 representing a $150 discount for each of an additional five AEDs purchased through AED Adventure. Again, we are pleased that the City of Brooklyn has taken advantage of this discount to help make a safer workplace. Signed, Kathy Kellums, Administrator of Cleveland Southwest Safety Council. You know, it's just a notification. Next, we have legislation, old business. We have on second reading, it's going to be adopting the tax budget for fiscal 2020. And as on second reading, that was read in, I believe, in the last meeting completely. Legislation, new business, Ordinance 2019-30 is first reading. It's establishing Domestic Abuse Commission Fund within the City of Brooklyn. Next item is Ordinance 2019-31. It's on first reading, authorizing the mayor of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio, to enter into agreement with the Fire Recovery USA LLC for billing and related services attributed to fire department incidents. And the last new item for ordinance, for new business is Ordinance 2019-32. It's on first reading, admitting exhibit A of Ordinance 2018-47, providing the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees, non-bargaining agreement of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. These three new ordinances were actually, if we had a full quorum and we could actually go, we're going to try to pass them on first reading and suspending the rules. Since we only have four people here tonight instead of five, we cannot do that, so they will be on the second reading at the next meeting. Does anybody have any additional comments from council or the mayor?
Okay, take a moment. If you don't know, we do have everything loaded onto Board Docs. You can read all the documents, contracts, letters, that the directors and myself upload onto Board Docs. It's been a useful platform for us so far, allowing for council not to have huge reads of paper to go through, but it also allows us to be a little bit more transparent with our residents on everything that council is looking at up here. So if you don't, if you haven't had an opportunity, just go right onto the city's website under City Council. You can click on that link, and not only do we have our City Council meeting information up here, but we also have our Planning Commission meeting, which, as you know, can be contentious on certain subjects. So, you know, if you ever want to read any documents that any of those commissions are looking at, you can click right on them, read anything that they're thinking, all the feedback. So I encourage you, if you haven't taken a look at the Board Docs, to take a look at it. And this is also the platform that the school board uses. So if you are, you know, acutely engaged in this community and you do like to participate and know what's going on in both entities, it's nice that you don't have to learn two platforms. It's a really easy-to-use platform, hence why we picked it, you know, and it's a model that you can go for back and forth between the school board and City Council as well.
Additional comments, questions, council? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn, Andy Selgerts?
Yes.
Mary Belvair?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.